Good evening, everyone. We're glad to have you here at City Council. Before we begin with you, bow your heads, please. Most holy and everlasting God our Father, we thank you for your many blessings you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for this day. Bless all our citizens. Help us as City Council make the right decisions and move Orangeburg forward. Continue to keep us healthy and safe. In your name we pray. Amen. We have first item here, consideration of March 19th, 2024 City Council minutes.
Rule of passage?
Motion's been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As heard, the motion is carried. The recognition of April community character trait is selfless. And selfless mean it is a concern more with the needs and wishes of others. And they ask us to adopt this community trait and try to demonstrate it throughout the month. That we think about other people more than we think about ourselves. I think that's a good thing. Okay, tonight, we have an appearance from Orangeburg University Development Partner Railroad Corner update. So we want all of the partners to come at this time and give us an update of Railroad Corner. Thank you.
And give them a hand while they come.
You all can come if you would like.
Yeah, we're just, I'm gonna, thank you very much. Make the presentation and as our city administrator said, keep it simple, but make a good news.
Yes.
So we can do both those at the same time. Good evening. My name's Mike Glenn. I'm with Luna Development. I'm introducing to my partners Larry Sally, which HBCU Edac, also a co-developer with the project, Bob Jenkins, who is President/CEO of Renaissance Equity Partners, and Don Phoenix, who is Chief Investment Officer of Renaissance Equity Partners as well. So this is the team that kind of gets it all done, from the financing to the development to the construction, working with the city, and I was gonna add this at the end, but I'll add at the beginning. Working with the city, with Sydney, and with John Singh, and Randy Emptying has been just a wonderful experience. I've done this development for about 35 years, and I can tell you, working hand in hand with to get through problems and issues and usher things along in this very complicated project has just been completely wonderful experience. So I was gonna wait till the end to say that, but I'll say that right now. So today, hopefully, we have some really good news for you about our project. What I want to start out with is, we've been at this since September officially of 2022, and that's when we had the award for our response to the RFP. So what you see here, so I made a list of things to kind of see what we've accomplished, because obviously, we haven't torn any buildings down. We don't have any shovels out in the ground yet. But still, behind the scenes, a lot has happened. So I'm gonna run through these lists of things here real quick. We've got the award. We had a memorandum of understanding that's been executed. Our design due diligence started next in December. We started negotiating a purchase and development agreement, and I think we're really, really close to getting that done. We selected a second general contractor because prices went up really high, but that contractor, Samit Construction, has done a great job. We continue to work with our project lenders. In another slide, you'll see that we have term sheets from every single lender involved in the project, which is kind of a big deal, because you don't get a term sheet if they don't like your project and want to fund your project. We have been working with tenants. We have two letters of intent out for the project. And in the back, if you can stand up, please, Tiger Green is owner of That Boy's Magic. And he was the first one to sign a letter of intent for the retail space. And he will be able to provide great wings and other great fun food. And so we're really excited. We went out again to look at the site. And we also have really two others. I'm not at liberty to name one, but I think if we can nail that down, it'll be a great fit for the city. We continue working with Museum, and their design has caught up, almost caught up to our design. And I think it's gonna be a great project. I also have a picture of that to show you later on. We had the property rezoned. The city did that. We were awarded an energy storage grant from the Department of Energy for a battery storage system, which was one of five in the entire country by the DEQ, National DEQ. We had a great meeting on January 11th with all the lenders and most of the council. They were very impressed with what they saw and the opportunity here, and that helped us get to where we are with lenders today. We are at this, as of today, we're about 65, almost 70% through our design construction documents. We met with the city on our 50% review of the documents, and the comments back were very good. Good enough for us that we were able to take those drawings, send them out to the market, and have them priced. To be honest, we're a little bit over budget, but we think we can make some changes, minor changes, to get that number back down. But we're really, it is not something that's gonna stop us from moving forward. We continue to work with Claflin University and South Carolina State University. We have a LOI from out to both of the universities. The Claflin University LOI is executed, and we made some changes to South Carolina State University, but that LOI should be finished next week. And then, one of the big things is, we applied for our permit for demolition for the buildings. So that means that we're getting very, very close. Because what we wanted to be able to do is tie the demolition right into construction. Our closing for our construction loan, our financing, is scheduled for, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, beginning to mid-June.
Yes.
So, but we want to get started sooner, break some ground, knock some buildings down, and keep on rolling. Oop. Okay. Push once, twice. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm not good with this. So, one more? Okay. So these are the banks that we have as partners. US Bank, we have a term sheet, US Bank, South Carolina Community Loan Fund, we also have a term sheet, and National Community Investment Fund, also a term sheet. So we are negotiating the terms and conditions of those term sheets. Then those term sheets turns into a commitment letter for financing. The tax credit, New Market Tax Credit financing process, closing process is unlike just traditional financing. It closes process takes about two months, because there's so many people and groups involved, and it just takes a long time. So we start closing sometime at the end of this month, and so we have May, and then June to finalize the closing. Just keep, refresh everybody's memory about the New Market Tax Credits. Why it's so important? Not everybody is able to qualify for New Market Tax Credits. There are seven boxes that you gotta check to be qualified for the credits. Housing, which we're obviously a big part of what we're doing. Community goods and services, commercial goods and services, strengthening minority businesses, job creation, and I think we have, I'm going by memory, but...
Accessible jobs?
Accessible jobs.
Quality jobs.
Quality jobs. And number of jobs is, I think, over 100 jobs created, both through the construction and then permanent jobs. So here's some pictures, some designs, and of, this is existing as you go down Boulevard. That's the old theater, barber shop, and some retail on the first floor and residential on the second floor. Buildings are built back in the, well, in the early 1900s to 1920s. As I mentioned earlier, this project would not be successful without the partnership with the universities. Working with South Carolina State University and Claflin. We feel that this partnership is something that will buoy and anchor the development and connect the, further connect the city with the universities, and vice versa. So if you remember, what you see here is a existing layout. There are three phases to the project. Phase one has been broken into Phase 1A and 1B. 1A is going to be the building along Boulevard, I'm sorry, Russell Street for South Carolina State University. Phase 1B, which will be occurring right after that, will be for Claflin. Buildings will be tied together, and you'll have the full project. There'll also be 10,000 square feet of office space on the second floor, and then another 10,000 square feet of commercial space, retail space on the first floor. And to the left and to an upper is surface parking, until a structure parking facility will be constructed sometime down the road. And this is just a more updated version that shows exactly where the buildings are. You see where the museum is. You see where, on the bottom, towards the bottom, can I? It's not showing. To the bottom, you'll see where the building for South Carolina State is. Up from that, in the center, is where the Claflin building is. And to the left, you'll see the parking, and at the top of the page, you'll see parking as well. And this is what it's gonna look like for the Phase 1 building. Seven stories. There'll be 100 beds for student housing, and then the second floor, first floor, second floor office, first floor retail and commercial space. We think it's a combination of design from the existing structures at the universities and blends in with the museum and with the library. And so the other part of this project, which we're not a part of, but we work very closely with the university, I mean, the museum design. So Cecil Williams and his museum, Civil Rights Museum, are moving into a new building. They've been able to capture some of the flavor of the existing facade, as you see in the design here. I don't have the exact specifications in terms of how tall the building is or how many square feet it is, but it is much larger than what he has now, and it more accommodate what his collection is and other items that he'll be able to gather for his museum. And this is an overview of that building. To the left of that building is the South Carolina State Building. There's a lot happening, going on. The acreage for this site is about 1.25 acres. And we're gonna have about 125,000, 145,000 square feet of development on this project. But there still allows for plenty of open space and courtyard space and patios to sit and dine out at restaurants and have events. Our goal is to work, one of our goals is to work with the universities and to have participation with their programs in the development, construction, and management of this project. And we're really excited about starting our first group sometime in the end of April. And finally, some milestones to keep in mind. Our design will be completed on March 31st, so we'll have 100% documents on, I'm sorry, that's the wrong date. I apologize for that. The early site work, which means demolition, will start sometime in, hopefully, by April 22nd. Our, we hope to have a building permit issued by May 15th. The May 1st is when the drawings will be completed and be submitted. As we start construction, we hope to have the site work completed and start going vertical on the project by June 1st, and then construction will be completed August 15th, 2025. We will have another meeting with, presentation update with City Council, where we present a much more detailed schedule. So again, we're very excited. We've made a lot of progress. A lot of you don't see, again, because it takes a lot of work to get to the point where we are today, with the financing, with the design, with the permits. But we're proud to be here today, say that. We're getting ready to start.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We're glad to hear that it's on the way, because certainly, we need it to be on the way, like yesterday.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yeah, we really do. We have promised our citizens that we're gonna be on the move with this, and we really need to be on the move, and they need to see some shovels in the ground. Yes, sir.
Any comments from any?
Thank you for your presentation. What is that logo on the top right hand?
That's a, that's a South Carolina State University logo.
Is that part of the building?
Yes.
Is Claflin going to be on the other side or what?
They have their own building, so they will put their building on their logo, their logo on their building. Yes.
Oh, okay.
No, just want to thank you all for coming and explaining to us, because I want to see the construction complete. That's what I want to see. But thanks so much.
Thank you for having us. Again, we will make this a regular visit. We'll try and do this at least every other month, and then during construction, every month. And then, obviously, we'll be taking people for tours on site when it gets safe enough to do that.
Okay, good.
Yes, ma'am.
So you've provided the student housing milestone and milestones and timeline. Are we to assume that the commercial part of this is also going to be a part of this timeline as well?
Yes. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. Yes, it's all part of the same construction.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate the update.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yes, sir. At this time, we're gonna hear from Hillcrest Golf Course Commission, and they're gonna give us update when y'all come at this time, please.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Randy Shula, I think y'all know who I am. I'd like to recognize our commission members, all of these in the back that are our commission members. Greg, we work very closely with Greg with our monthly meetings or bi-monthly meetings that we have, giving him input of what we, as a vision, as a commission group, would like to see at Hillcrest and what we would like to see done at Hillcrest. Basically, we just wanted to come before Council and thank you for the support you've given us, ask for more support, of course. Hillcrest is a very vital part for the city, not only the city, but the county. When you look in the area, we have very few places to go play golf that are close to Orangeburg, and Orangeburg can pull a lot of people from different areas. So we're really asking for y'all's support. I know Sydney's been in some lengthy meetings with State College, trying to get everything worked out, lease agreements or whatever, and that end of it. Our last commission meeting, he provided us with some very, very positive, probably the most positive information that I've been on since I've been with the commission, of what's to come. So I guess, as a commission, and as I being the spokesman, we really want y'all's support when time comes to put funding back into Hillcrest, because it needs to be a premier place for State College to use, for our citizens of Orangeburg to use, and for our people in the county to come and use. What we ask as a commission from y'all is to get with Sydney. Let us know y'all's vision for us. What do you want from us? We have no problem coming before you twice a year, giving you an update of what we're doing, what we think needs to be done, what's going on out there, and how we can better the facility we have. We've got a gym right there that could really be a very, very, very star for the city of Orangeburg. So we're asking for y'all's support and y'all's guidance on what y'all need out of us. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, or our commission members will be glad to ask also.
The question, how is the advertisement? Are enough people being involved to get the advertisement out and to get people like? You should have something for young people coming at certain times, adults, women, what have you. So how's the advertisement going?
All of that, all of that is part of your golf course.
Yeah, I know.
When your golf course is a premier golf course that people want to come to, all of that falls into place. Your youth come. You'll have youth, you can have youth clinics. You can have a lot of things that go on when you have the golf course in the shape that it needs to be in. And we've kind of been stuck in limbo with State, getting the lease agreements and all this, which y'all know all about that. All of that is being worked out. Positive steps going forward. So I would say, in the next year to two years, you should see some very positive things going on. We advertise, I see advertising on billboards for Hillcrest. Very good. We draw a lot of people from different areas. A lot of the crowd comes down out of Ohio, going to Santee and other places on these packages. They stop in and play at Hillcrest. They enjoy playing Hillcrest. It's a player's golf course that anybody could play.
Okay, now you just said that when the golf course get in the position, what will it take to get it in the position so that people will really love to come?
I think a lot of that, and Sydney may be able to add in on this, because I don't want to speak out of turn, but Sydney knows more than what he can say on this end of it.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Thank you for your question, Councilwoman Kit. As Randy alluded to, I've been in conversations with South Carolina State University. In particular, we are doing an assessment. We've engaged a consultant to do an assessment of what it will take to get the course, I keep using this phrase, "up to par," pardon pun. But that assessment should be starting here within the next week or two. I just need to send back the engagement letter. But that is the first step. In my conversation with South Carolina State, we also want to put together a capital improvement plan so for the next five, seven years, we can make investments, partner to make investments that will improve the facility.
We just want to offer that whatever we can do as council members, be sure and get in touch with us, because we want it to be a place where people enjoy coming and doing, and playing the kind of golf they would love to play. So, and it's a place that should be, should be upbeat, where people love to come. And we need to know what needs to be done. Yes.
Well, I agree, and I'm excited to share some potential improvements that can be made that we have for your consideration.
Okay.
Are there any more questions?
I just have one, and I might have missed it. Your commission meetings are held how often?
We have, we generally have them every, the third Thursday. We were debating against Wednesday and Thursday, but the third Thursday of every month.
What time?
5:15, 5:30, 5:30. Right there at Hillcrest, at the facility. So we meet every month. We discuss what's going on out of Hillcrest, course improvements, or what needs to be done, and different things. What tournaments are coming up? I mean, it's a place, they have a lot of tournaments. And that's good. People love to come and play, and that's what we want. The Mayor's Cup, I will mention that, since Sydney brought that up. The Mayor's Cup was something that was started back in 96, I think it was. It was between the Country Club and the Hillcrest, their men's group, and Hillcrest men's group. The mayor got involved. They put it together. It was a Ryder Cup-type format to where we played each other one day there, one day at Hillcrest. That in 2019, it stopped. I think that's when the Tour Villes Azus purchased the golf course, and they kind of was getting it in shape and this. Then COVID came along after that. It just hadn't been done. They approached me as a member of the Hillcrest Men's Golf Association. We got it together. We raised funds, put teams together, kind of on a whim. Two months' time, it was up and running and going. It was previously a big highlight in the city. It was in the paper all the time, and it was a big thing that everybody was looking forward to seeing who was doing what. And we just had it two weeks ago, I believe it was. Good turnout. Cold one day, I hate to say, but the Country Club retained the cup, so they have the cup over there. So we're hoping this is something that we can do and build on. We had businesses sponsor it this year. We're looking maybe for it to try to get a corporate sponsor or somebody, and get the city involved in it and get it back going again, because it really highlights the golf course. And with all the improvements we're looking at, that's just another step to get as many things going on out there as we can. And the Rose Festival was coming up May the 4th, I think it is. Is that correct? So all of these things is, and the more we get the golf course up to par, as Sydney said, the more people and the more participation we'll have.
Wonderful.
Yep.
Wonderful.
So, anything else?
Thank you very much for that update.
Appreciate it, and we'd love to come back again.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. We had a meeting at Claflin University, I think it was last Thursday? Tuesday, last Tuesday. And we are concerned in closing Golf Avenue. And we asked Claflin to come to give us the update as to what they have proposed for the Golf Avenue as it relates to that meeting, before we read this last reading. And we also, yes, we also have...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Evering. We come back again on behalf of Claflin University and Dr. Dewan Warmack, our president, to once again bring you an update as to what has taken place and to again ask for your approval of the proposal to close Golf Avenue. We were asked to meet with the community. We did that last Tuesday, as the mayor said. We had the opportunity to hear from all of the individuals that were there. And those individuals provided us with information that they were, of their concerns, and it ranged everywhere from speed bumps and speeding on the street to what we've heard from the Murdoch family, which is access. One of the things that we was very sensitive to is the concerns, not only of those individuals who are directly impacted by this. And again, for the record, the ones that are directly impacted is two families, two property owners, the Murdochs who have a property there, and the Glovers who have a property. But there were also those who are indirectly. The neighbors that live on Clark Street, the neighbors that live on Lewis Dutton, the neighbors that live outside of where we're proposing the closure. Heard from all of them. What we did not have at that time and was examples of... What we did not have at that time and was examples of, of what it might look like, what is possible. Now, to address the speed bumps real quick, uh, someone said, "Just put speed bumps." Well, speed bumps will help to slow traffic down. It will not help to control the accumulation of, of, of vehicles on the street. Um, they will just come in at a slower pace and will still have the, the, um, gatherings that we have been faced with. So, what we have, uh, is some examples and we have with us, uh, Mr. Bill Croft, who is our Director of Facilities. Uh, he is much more, um, aware and much more in tune with, uh, with all of the technology and everything than I am. So, I'm actually going to, to pass it off to him and, um, I think he can talk you through what's there.
So, just wanted to show us some different examples of, of gate setups and systems that we could use, ranging from, this is just, uh, what I would say a more basic, just swing arm gate, where you would come up fenced on both sides, utilizing either a key fob, or there's also barcode scanning where you can put a barcode on the side of a window. There's a, a machine that would scan that and open for guests. keypad can also be done on that. Also with a rolling type gate, and we actually have at our, um, MSRC Science Building on Golf, that upper left shows you an example of a, what is a rolling gate there that we have done in a cast iron aluminum there. Uh, also on the bottom right shows you an example of what you could do with a, with a, what I call a sliding gate. It could be either similar access, whether it is keypad, key fob, or also the barcode scan system that can go in on that. Here it gives you a couple of examples of what we could do with a, what you say I call an arm gate, um, with a little substation there, and then same access control there with either the barcode or a fob or keypad. Uh, this shows where, and as we look into the future of having that as a man gate also. Uh, this is, um, actually one on the top right is one that I did at a previous institution and installed. Uh, it lets for, during heavier traffic, you can open up and then you can close down and then go through the check station as you come in. So, you could have flexibility during the time of the day on how you approach it. I think that. Yeah, and here are showing some of the readers that are available. Uh, actually paging systems that would call someone. Those are used a lot in apartment complexes that you see. And then the person on the other side can actually put in a code to open through a phone at that point. Uh, also seeing the scan system on the left there on the bottom and then keypad and fob on that upper left. And then some more examples of drive-in with a center type station, um, that you could do.
So, what, um, what you see here is, is one of the, um, systems where it, uh, where you ha- where you have the ability to, to have the two lanes, one that will stop and one, uh, where as Mr. Croft talked about, the reader is in place. And this is actually a, uh, a video of that in place. So, the, uh, the vehicle that is a resident or a student or a faculty staff member that has the, um, uh, the access, um, never, never has to stop. Uh, they'll come up, um, the white, uh, thing on the, on your side there is the reader. There's a keypad on the car and arm goes up and they go, they go through. Okay. Uh, and so again, uh, another example of, uh, of, of gates and again, another example of how that works. Folks that are, that are not, um, that are guests will come in on the left-hand side. Uh, here, the, you come up, the reader is there. It reads the, the sticker that's on the car. The arm goes up, vehicle goes through and, um, no one is hindered in terms of their access. So, these are, are all types of, of, um, of technology that is available uh, and the types of things that we will be looking at, uh, to, um, you know, make this work for everyone.
Okay. Other, I'm gonna let them complete there with, okay? Dr. Peters has, uh, uh, she, make your presentation, tell them what you have.
Okay, so we have, um, a letter on behalf of Claflin University just stating about access and not restricting. And so I'll just read the letter.
Yes.
That is right. So, our members of City Council, I am writing on behalf of Claflin University to formally express our earnest interest in acquiring ownership of Golf Street. A proposal we believe holds significant mutual benefits for our esteemed institution, the local community, and the city at large. Claflin University has long been anchored in the pursuit of ac- academic excellence in elevating and transforming our student body and in a deep commitment to our community engagement. As such, the well-being, the well-being and prosperity of our surrounding neighborhoods indeed remain at the forefront of our priorities. The acquisition of Golf Street is seen as crucial to our campus infrastructure, aimed at ensuring safety for our students and the surrounding committee, community. We recognize the potential concerns that may stem from such a transition and it, and it is with this in mind that Claflin University wishes to extend a commitment to the City Council and its constituents. We pledge to maintain uninterrupted access to Golf Street for all residents. This pledge is unwavering irrespective of any future changes within the City Council's composition or potential shifts in the university's leadership. This commitment will be clearly noted in the terms of ownership transfer to ensure that the residents' rights to access their properties and are preserved under any and all circumstances. It is our firm belief that this commitment exemplifies the principle of good neighborliness, a principle the university holds in high regard. We hope that the City Council will view this as assurance, as a testament to our genuine desire for a partnership that benefits all parties involved.
Thank you. Thank you. City Council, are there any questions for Claflin? Dr. Peters.
Yes, sir.
Can we have a copy of that documentation for, um?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's for, for the city, yes.
Yes, I can bring in for.
Okay. Um, Chief William.
Yes, sir.
You've given different scenarios for the gates. Which one do you really have in mind?
I, uh, I. Yeah, it's, uh, I, I can tell you what my preference is.
Right.
Okay, uh, and what my preference is, is the, is the last ones that we showed you. Um, having the, the, the dual access. Um, now, whether or not the street is wide enough to accommodate that, whether or not that could be worked in, uh, that's, that's, that's his, his wheelhouse, uh, Mr. Mr. Croft. Uh, but that's what the preference is because with that, we can control, um, uh, the individuals who are visiting uh, without impeding those who, uh, who, um, live there.
So, the students will be given access to?
Yeah.
All the students, uh?
The students who have parking permits, uh, would be given access. Those who choose not to get, uh, get the permit, uh, they will not have access.
Okay. So, do you have any sort of, um, timeline that if I'm passing through that gate with my ID card, I may have about two or three or four people in my car who are not students? Now, would that register whoever passes that through that gate?
No, sir, it doesn't. And, but, but we, we don't manage that now. Um, it, but, students are allowed to have visitors. And if they have three or four or five people in the car, it may be mom, grandma, and auntie. You know, and, and so, um, you know, we, we, you know, we, we allow our students access to campus uh, without, um, trying to identify every single person in the car.
You know, the reason why I'm asking that question is just to do away with the gathering because if I have other people in my car who are not students, I can bring them in and then you end up increasing the gathering again.
And, yes, sir, that is, that is a possibility. Uh, individuals walking into the area is also still a possibility because the streets are not closed off for, for, for pedestrian.
What is your timeline when people are gathering? What is your timeline in getting out from your office or from the gate down to the, you know, place of gathering?
I'm sorry.
When you see students gathering together, do you as a police officer, do you send your police officers to go and see what is going on?
Yeah, so just like any other police department, Commissioner, Councilman, um, our response is based on what our calls for service allow us to do. If I have an off, my officers and they are all tied up, that call, that response time may be slower than if they're not tied up. Uh, if we are, if our officers are just patrolling and we see that, that the ga- the gatherings are starting, uh, we, we try to send an officer to that area as soon as possible for, if for no other reason for high visibility.
Okay. So, that's to find out what is going on?
Yes.
I am here, hearing from the meeting last week, well, a week or two ago. And now, I have really been praying over this situation. And the prayer had to do with safety. Safety for everyone, not just a side here and a side there, but for everyone that's involved with this situation. Now, to me, when you pray about things, the Lord will show you what you should do. And we all are asking for safety. And, and I looked at the situation that happened at South Carolina State just a week ago. If that, uh, I think it's, um, not Chestnut, but what's the street? Buckley. If Buckley was not closed off going into Belleville Road, somebody could have really been hurt worse than what happened. But because they could not get out, they were caught. We have got to think of all of us, not just sides. It, all of us are involved. And the safety of the majority of the people is what we want. Now, I, I really would love to see everyone on the same accord. That may not happen, but I wish it would. But if it doesn't, then we have to go with the majority of what people want. So, I'm asking us as dedicated folk, praying folk that love the Lord, let him fight your battles and come to a good conclusion of what should be done. And this is from the heart because I do not want to see anybody get hurt just because we did not do what we needed to do. It's the safety. Folk are bringing children from different areas of the world here for us to take care of. And we have that right to take care of everybody. And, and, and I, I'm sure the council wants that. And I hope that everybody else will do the same. So, I say to us, let's keep praying and hoping that the decision that's made will help everyone. And if it doesn't, then you need to keep praying. Okay? But thank you so much and we, we appreciate what you've brought to us.
Chief, oh, no, no, wait a minute. Hold on. Chief?
Yes, sir.
Can you explain to them about the easement that they asked for? Can you, can you, about, you know, they asked, hold, sit, sit down, just wait a minute. Sit down for a minute. Yeah. Okay. They, they asked for, uh, they, they talked about easement, but explain to them what the easement is and what we. Cause that word came up. Cause I don't.
Yeah, so, I mean, the, the definition of easement, the right to cross or otherwise use someone else's land for a specific purpose or the state of feeling of comfort or peace. Our letter that Dr. Peters read gives right of access to anyone within the perimeter of what is being, the Golf Avenue that will be going to private. And it, as she said in the letter that she'll provide to you, it supersedes anybody on the Claflin side and also what would happen on the City Council side. So, it is.
So, do that, do that come from, cause I'm not sure on this. Do that come from the city or that come from the, uh, the college, the easement?
So, in the, and I've, I've done this in Tennessee, so this is new for me in South Carolina. But what was, when I was in Tennessee in a similar situation, our transfer of the road to go private included, similar to what Dr. Peters has read, language that granted the access. There's not an actual easement that is shown because the easement would have to be the, the, either the entire street. It doesn't coincide with the ownership of the property of the person. So, we are, what we would be doing is granting a right of access. And that would be, be notarized. I don't know how y'all would want to record that. Um, but what I did in Tennessee, it was an official document that went with the, the process.
So, uh, so, you know, our, our main concern, this is one of our main concerns, we want to always make sure that the Murdochs could get into their property whenever they wanted to. And the Glover's, you know, cause that's where the gate would be. Have a seat. Wait a minute, Ms. Murdock, wait. Wait a minute, Ms. Murdock, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait a minute, wait a minute, Red, Red. Wait a minute, Red, you can't do that. Hold on, Red. That, we respect you, we respect y'all highly. Have a seat, have, have a seat, sir. No, sir. No, no, don't do that.
An easement does not take my property. I, a gate does not give me easement. A gate gives anybody easement. A gate that goes to the gate and opens up. Easement does not make a gate up under mine.
We. You know, we respect y'all highly, but y'all have to, please, man. We, we.
No gate, no easement, no deal.
No plan, no deal.
Yes, yes, thank, thank you.
Ma- Mayor, if, if I might.
Good.
I, I've, I've spoken with our, our city attorney about this, an easement, and he might be able to shed a little bit more light in terms of what could be done in this situation, uh, to, to meet not just the Murdoch's request, but any property owner within the gated area. Uh, we could put language in either the ordinance, uh, to make sure that they have a per- perpetual access to their property.
Okay. Cause I, I didn't quite understand the word easement and I want to make sure that we got it out and we, that they understood this is what they asking if we told them, you know? I, we didn't tell them we're gonna do it, but this, we, we can work on it. Work on it to get them, the, the easement to, to move this along if we could. You know, if our attorney, if our attorney can put that in the language and then that.
Absolutely.
How do y'all feel if you can put that in the language? I think that, I think that would be such a help if you put.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
It is my position that anything that we put into this, um, document as relates to the closing of whatever part of Golf Avenue, that all of, all of which needs to be there, needs to be there before we make any kind of decision. Based on what, um, Mr. Evering just said, and, um, I had a question to, to address, to, I mean, to, to ask of, um, the Claflin folk. But whatever we come up with, it needs to be of such that everybody is aware, everybody clearly understands, and I'm not just referring to council, but I'm referring to the residents who live in that area as well. And with that said, the question that I have, you mentioned something about the gate and, um, you hadn't apparently, well, let me ask you this, I don't want to assume anything. So, you haven't decided which of those, um, mechanisms that you showed us, that you, the technology part of, that you're actually gonna use?
No, ma'am, we have not made a, a decision on that.
Okay, okay. And with that said, wait, once you have determined which is in the best interest of not only the university, but the residents as well, my suggestion would be at that time, in, in addition to what, um, Mr. Evering just said, based on the ordinance and what have you, that all of that is presented to council. So, we will have a full. So we will have a full view and a full understanding of what we're talking about before we move forward. Because right now, it's like peace over here and a piece over there, and I'm confused. I'm going to be totally honest. Because the question that I have, okay, if you are not certain which of the technology pieces that you're going to employ, how are the residents going to get from point A to point B? Is everybody going to have access? And what kind of access are they going to have?
Look, councilwoman, not, the access that they will have is full access.
Is what?
Full access. They will have access. That doesn't change. So the technology that we use doesn't change the fact that they'll have access. So, you know, whether we go with, you know, with an RFID reader, whether we go with a scanner, whether we go with a clicker, you know, whether we go with someone standing there unlocking it and opening it 24 hours a day, they will, they will have access. So that doesn't change.
Well, this has been a great day in Orangeburg, and it only can get better. I may have missed something in your letter, Dr. Peters. But I didn't hear segment apart. I heard Gulf Avenue. I may have missed something. Now, we giving you, giving Claflin Gulf Avenue, we giving them a segment?
It is only the segment, and it is only from Clark to Magnolia. And so I can amend that for you.
Now, going along with my colleague here and what's been said, it would be nice if the parties, all parties, have some part in whatever you choose. Because they're, I mean, the students have a part, everybody have a part. Unless you just choose a here it is, take it. Is it any way possible that even city council could have a spiel in that? I don't want to be in it. But those people who come up, because I do that to go in my, push buttons to go in my, what do you call it? Garage, not garage, storage unit. Trying to remember that now. Now, to march my car, I just drive up and it picks up. So I know you make it user-friendly for everybody. Give them a chance to talk into it, man, so they know. Because what's been told to us, 90% of what's been told to me, us and me, was new. But it didn't have to be. It could have been told to us ahead of time or passed along to us. And I know you're hardworking doing, and continue to do the hard work because I would love to see the end of this story. And everybody is applauding the end of this story.
We are, we are going to make sure that the language from Claflin and the constituents be put in there from the attorney. And then we'll come back. And then we'll, we'll vote, let's put the language in there. Because we do want to make this a smooth transition, as smooth as we, as possible. But our attorney and Claflin, they need to converse. And our attorney is on, and so we can make sure that the language is saying the same thing. And then if we have to have another meeting, I feel like with the constituents, we can do that to meet them so they can get it all out. So I think that's where we need to put our hat. Anybody object to that? Anybody? Any of y'all object to that?
No, but Mayor Butler, I wish to recuse myself from this matter, any discussions or votes related to this matter due to a potential conflict of interest between my job and my elected official position. Thank you.
Yes, man, we understand that.
Mr. Mayor. Can I make a motion? On this matter? I know it's the third reading, but based on the latest information that we received from our city manager about the language, you know, from the attorney. And based on the discussion that we just had tonight, I will make a motion for us to table this item until attorney, you know, posts that into writing. And also by then, we may be able to see what the plan is for the gates before we take any action by the city.
Second motion.
Motion has been made by Dr. Kalu, second by Councilman Hannah, all in favor. Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Our new business is approval of proposed City of Orangeburg budget calendar for the fiscal year of 2024 and 2025.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For your consideration, we've included a proposed budget calendar. And I'll just point out some of the highlights if I can. On June 11th, we have for your consideration a planning and goal-setting retreat that would include our department heads. On July 9th, we'd have the actual budget workshop with first reading being August, scheduled for August 6th. Second reading and public hearing scheduled for August 20th and third reading September 3rd. This is the proposed calendar that we have for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
Do anybody have any questions about the proposed calendar? Any comments? We need, we need adoption.
Yes, we just need your approval.
I move the adoption of the calendar for the fiscal year 2024-25.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kidd and second by Councilman Strowman, all in favor. I mean, Councilman Kalu, I'm going to make that correction. Councilman Kalu, eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Skate park update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I come before you to give you an update on the skate park. We've been, it doesn't feel like we're working hard because we haven't moved any dirt, but we have been working hard with our team, with Platform Group and JLA. We have gotten almost all our drawings and items that we need to have in place on the plans completed. We were trying to work on one item that was going to require an encroachment permit, which we are going to need an encroachment permit with DOT, but that is not delaying us. So I want to give you just a real quick, just bullet dates, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. But we are targeting to have our full set of drawings ready by this month and mid-April. We'll be going in to putting, wait, I'm sorry, getting our pricing together. So we'll have estimated pricing together in April, mid-April. And then in May, we'll have all our documents together for bid. And we'll be aiming to break ground in June. We're pushing about a month off of where we were wanting to be, and we may be able to make that ground up as we go along. But right now, we have it set to start in June and probably mid to end of June with a completion of September to October. So we're going to really push to go for September, obviously. But at the same time, that's kind of a breakdown of our schedule, but I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Singh concerning the skate park? Okay, thank you, Mr. Singh.
You're welcome.
Approval and acceptance of grant airport runway rehabilitation.
Yes, sir. The next item is a grant that we have received primarily from the FAA. As you know, we have a airport plan that we have worked through over the years. It's usually a five to seven-year plan. And we adjust it and tweak it. But one of the primary items is down past 2027, '28 is the relocation of our terminal building. And with that being said, we're in the process of doing the planning and the plans. That is the time and the FAA's desire to look at doing those plans at this time. The total cost of the plans is approximately $295,000. The FAA share is about 265. The state of South Carolina also has a share of about 14,000. And then us as a sponsor or the airport, we have a share of 14,000. That will be coming out of our capital penny sales tax that we do have in place now. So that's, and basically, we're asking for authorization from the city administrator to enter the agreement with the state of South Carolina for the money that they're providing.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Singh concerning item number five? If not, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve this.
Most, most has been made by Councilman Strowman. Second by Councilman Kalu, all in favor. Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number six for fair housing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I come before you this evening to present the resolution for fair housing. April is HUD's Fair Housing Month. The Fair Housing Act, which started in 1968 prohibits discrimination in housing in any form or fashion. And this year's housing theme is entitled Fair Housing, the Act in Action. I believe you have a copy of the flyer in your, in your handout. Typically, the city recognizes each year the Fair Housing Month in the form of a resolution to emphasize fairness and affordability in housing, which is a challenge for many cities, municipalities, including ours. So in recognition of Fair Housing Month, in addition to the resolution, if it's passed, our plan is to post information for the public regarding fair rent and fair housing on our social media platforms, our website, and also in City Hall. This is being done not only because it's a requirement of us to do so as a city municipality, but also, and most importantly, it's the right thing to do.
Are there any questions for Ms. Williams? Any question for Ms. Williams before I read this resolution? Thank you, Ms. Williams. It says, "Resolution for Fair Housing. Whereas the City of Orangeburg desires that all its citizens be afforded the opportunity to obtain decent, safe, and sound living environments. Wherefore, the City of Orangeburg rejects discrimination on the basis of race, religion, color, sex, national origin, disability, and family status in the sale, rental, and provision of other housing services. Whereas, the state of South Carolina enacts the South Carolina Fair Housing Law in 1989, and whereas April is recognized as national, national as Fair Housing Month. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Orangeburg, South Carolina, in a council assembly do officially recognize April as Fair Housing Month, passed by the city council and of the City of Orangeburg, state of South Carolina in the second day of April 2024." Thank you. No, I don't think, we don't need, do we need, okay. Need a motion.
I move the adoption of the Fair Housing, resolution for Fair Housing Month.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kidd.
Second.
Second by Councilman Nott, all in favor. Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, Mr., item number seven, Ms. Williams.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
My next item is to present the first reading of the ordinance to consider a zoning map change from A1 residential single-unit district to A2 residential multi-unit district for property located 1700 Hillsborough Road, tax map number 0174-17-08-003. I believe your packet contains information from the public hearing and the Planning Commission meeting that was held on March 21st at the City Gym 6:00 p.m. Your package should have copies of the property maps, the application from the developer that outlines his intent, and the public hearing comments, and the Planning Commission's recommendation. I can tell you that for the meeting in March, we had approximately 20 members of the community to attend. Some of them are even here today. And all of them who spoke were not in support of the rezoning of the property. The property owner was present, and he did speak to his intent for the property. This is the second time this particular property was requested for a zoning map change. It was brought up by the same owner, same property, back in 2017 and again this year. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to not recommend the zoning map change.
Are there any questions for Ms. Williams before I read this ordinance? Okay. An ordinance to approve a change to the zoning district map from A1 residential single-unit district to A2 residential multiple-unit district for, for property located at Hillsborough Road, also known as tax map number 0174-17-08-003-000, and provided for related matters. Anybody, any motions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the Planning Commission's decision and deny it.
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kidd, all in favor. Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you. Matters pertaining to Department of Public Utilities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
You have a for you, the Department of Public Utilities budget calendar, proposed budget calendar for our fiscal year 2024-25. Two significant dates that I will point your attention to, June 27th, 2024, and June 28th. As council may recall, before COVID, we used to do two meetings. We consolidated that during COVID and, and, you know, just did one meeting and then generally a half day and then the first reading. We think it's important this time to consider going back to a similar format that we did before. I will offer up an option for council that we do the two meetings on June 27th or June 28th, or we could do one full day if that works for council. I was trying to break it up for you because it is going to be a lot of information. But I will do whatever you instruct me to do, even if it means we have to restructure a day or whatever. But I, this is just my first best effort.
What would be the timing on the two days?
So the two days would begin at nine and end at noon. We will try to keep you, and to be fair, Mr. Hannah, we're going to structure the day. One portion of the day will be a lot of information that you need to make decisions going forward. And then the second portion of the day will be a deep dive into the capital projects that we normally present to you. That would be day two. And generally, we can control the pace of that, or you can control the pace of that based on how, how, how many questions you have, how much information you need from us to get a better understanding of what we're doing. But I just want to be safe and tell you that it could, if we did it on one day, it could be a full day.
I would suggest that we have a full day. That means that I won't have to get up early both mornings.
Mr. Mayor, I think the two days will be fine because if you collect your data, the first day you can go home and the first day you can go home and digest those data, especially with the numbers. You know, if you're not really in tune with numbers, you can go home and take your time and look at the numbers. Instead of a full day. And for us, on call at the hospital, now, I think two days will be fine.
And we'll find, we'll, we'll provide lunch both days, if, if you do it that way.
Mr. Harley.
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be possible, just to piggyback on Madam Kit down there at the nine o'clock? Could you push it back, I mean, push it up to 10?
Oh, that, that's not a problem. That means we, we finish a little later. But we certainly can accommodate that if, if council, my staff would probably appreciate that as well.
I, two days will be fine.
And, and if council needs to consider it and let me know by the next meeting, we can do that as well.
Yeah, we can let you know.
Okay.
That'll work.
We did one day last year, didn't we?
Yes.
We did one day, but I, I got a lot more information. To deal with this year. So, so again, Mr. Mayor, if council wants to let me know at our next meeting which direction we want to go. And, and I will, I, I think you guys are in agreement that we start at 10 instead of nine. I, I got a lot of head nods. So I'll, I'll make that correction and then you will let me know next week or next council meeting whether we want to do two days or one day.
Okay. Do we, we need to adopt this, the calendar?
Yes.
With the correction. Or you want to wait?
Well, it, so when you adopt it, if, if you know what date you want to do it, or what, whether you want to do it all on one day, you can adopt it or, or if you want to do it split.
Split.
All right, so there's no need to wait till next time, then? Okay.
I make a motion to adopt, again.
Adopted generally with the correction of 10 o'clock.
Of 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
Yes.
A motion has been made by Councilman Kalu. And, and second by Councilman Hannah, all in favor?
Aye.
I say the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. That is all I have.
Yes, sir, thank you. We have executive session, item number one, discussing a negotiation incident to propose contract arrangement and purpose sale, proposed sale, purchase of property, the receipt of legal advice, and other matters covered by attorney-client privilege, capital project sale tax, South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A-2. Item number 10, discussion of personnel policies, including personnel handbook, and the receipt of legal advice and other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, South Carolina Code Section 30-4-7-A12. We need a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into second session.
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
I say the motion is carried. Good night and thank you for being here. We're going to ask council to remain up here because we need to sign something.